Let the closing meeting of the Zion City Council be ordered. Clerk please call and roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No.
Would you say a few words, please?
Yes. I'd like to lead us all in a word of prayer before we start. Father, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to discuss important business in the city. Lord, we're thankful for the place that you've given us to live. We ask, Lord, that you would guide us in this meeting and bless this city in Jesus' name. Amen.
Item number four, agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, I have one under a closed session. If we could add discussion of pending litigation.
Okay. Item number thirteen, we'll add to purchase and sale of real estate will be pending litigation. Are there any other agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as changed?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? Please call.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is a special presentation. This was originally going to be for Kringle's Kingdom. Is there anybody here from Kringle's Kingdom who I don't think that they were ready for tonight? I think they'll probably be here in two weeks. So we'll go to item six, which is citizens' comments. Please keep in mind that citizens' comments are listed, or excuse me, are limited to three minutes per person. And there are a number of people that wish to speak tonight, so I would ask that you please do keep your comments to three minutes. Jeff Joshua and Gino Gunn? Did you both want to speak together?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Councilor. I'm Jefferson Joshua.
My name is Gino Gunn.
And pretty much, we came to you guys today to ask you guys for permission. We have an organization, it's a nonprofit organization, that's pretty much been around for about six years. We did a walk with the Bridge Builders and Zion Police Department August 4th. Everything pretty much turned out pretty good. But we want to let you guys know today that Magnify Peace is pretty much an organization that's here for prevention and pretty much we use modern ways to control certain hostilities within our community.
And basically, like you said, we're asking for permission. We see the damage that's being done in the community by the deaths and the murders. The children are seeing this. We're asking for, not sponsors, but we're just asking for the community to see what our symbol means that he wears. And we want to start something new in Zion that people can be proud of and work together as a community of everybody as one.
Also, pretty much with every event that we do, we would like to get the Bridge Builders and Zion Police Department in on. Like I said, we did a walk August 4th, and pretty much everybody introduced themselves by first names. No badge numbers, no last name. And just off that, it built a trust with the kids that we had out there. So doing a little research about Zion from 2000 to 2015, the national crime rate is at 414.2 percent. That's staggering if y'all didn't know. It's like, we here to grab these kids' attention. They hanging outside too much. There are no programs in Zion.
Yeah, we're here to basically just have picnics, sponsor whatever we can. We're taking everything out of our own pockets right now to show people that we are serious about this. And we just, once again, just ask for the whole community to just see that there is a new movement, a new way, and we want to do it peacefully with the police department, with the children, with the older folks. Everybody is one in Zion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have a question about that. I know that the July 30th Bridge Builders Walk, did you guys join that walk?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And Chief, I think you were there. Is that correct? So how did that all go?
It was very good. One of the best successes.
Yes, we just started off. We just had the idea two weeks ago. We reached out to some of our people in Chicago, which is Magnify Peace, which has been an organization standing for six years. They have a beauty center being built around Milwaukee, also the Chicago area. It was founded by a cancer patient. And then from there, the walk just went beautiful. We talked to the people standing outside, met the older people, the younger people. We heard stories. The police department introduced themselves. People started to lay down their guards in the community.
Like a sense of trust with them.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I usually join those walks, but this time I couldn't. So thanks for being a part of it. Appreciate it.
Next is W.C. Brenner from Zion.
Mayor Hill, honorable gentlemen, gentle ladies, I stand before you this evening to call your attention to an article in today's, the business section of today's Chicago Tribune regarding fundraising for schools. Continued the world's greatest chocolate company in particular. Continued on page two, if you will allow me, and I quote from the article. "The company founded in 1939 as the Cook Chocolate Company began product fundraising 10 years later, selling candy in partnership with the North suburban Zion High School Band." I bring this to your attention, a bit of trivia about Zion. I do thank you for your attention. With your permission, I'll give it to the city clerk to copy and disperse or to throw out as she sees fit.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
If I may, please.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner.
Next is Doug Auer from Zion.
Good evening. I just want to bring up, there's been a lot going on lately with Route 53. Mayor Hill has recently signed on towards, along with numerous other mayors, in favor of Route 53. And basically, I think when people find out the facts about it, most people we've talked to are opposed to Route 53. Most people are not aware of the massive tax increases and toll increases that will go into effect with Route 53. Personally, I have to drive down I-94 every day. The toll on I-94 will probably triple. Even though I won't use Route 53, I'll have to pay triple the price to go down there. We'll all have to pay gasoline taxes, which will make us less competitive with Wisconsin. Also, this plan is calling for massive development down that corridor, which is taking away from all the communities on the east side. Zion could badly use much more development, and instead, they're going to build along Route 53. Right now, there's a large truck terminal going on that's being built in Graves Light that would have been perfect for our industrial park. So I think, I just ask, as the Lake County has been going around asking cities to vote and approve this, I would ask that maybe you give an opportunity for an opposing argument on this or presentation so that you could see the facts, because we already have over 1,000 petitions against this, and as people hear about it, they are opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Macklemore. Zion.
Good evening, councilmembers. I have two items, right? I'm going to try to do it all three minutes. First of all, I want to say on Agenda 10B, to waive fees for Christ Church, we got 30 churches here in the city of Zion. If we keep waiving fees, our taxes go keep going up. They are 501(c)(3), they already don't have to pay any taxes. Why are we keep waiving fees? That's one thing. July 14th, I attended the council meeting, not council meeting, the Lake County Board meeting, and a grant was given, 150687, called a JAG grant. And this grant was given, it says right here, "For the purpose of enhancing the state's attorney and special programs, community awareness, the vision capability, provide awareness and education outreach in Lake County." Thought that was real great. So I asked the council member, which was Audrey Nixon, what that mean? She said, "We're going to send out a lot of stuff." So Zion get half, and Waukegan gets half, right? So I was like, okay, you're going to send out a lot of stuff. People don't read mail. How you going to get an outreach? Where is the outreach going to come from? So she said, she started stuttering. She said, "I don't know. Go see your police department." So I run to Zion Police Department. Nobody there knows anything. So they sent me to Dave Nabel. Dave was off that day. I left him a message. He did call me in the morning. Dave kind of stumbled on me and started stumbling, and he didn't know what the grant was for. So I knew what I have to do. I got a foyer now. So I put a foyer to the police department. What's this grant for? So they sent me this back and said, "The grant was referred to as the Edward Barnes Memorial Grant." I ain't going to read you all that, because I ain't got them three minutes, but at the end of it, it says, "Zion Police Department applied for the Edward Barnes Memorial Grant in 2015 and specifies that we use this grant. If awarded to help cover costs of equipment of one new squad car, we have purchased." Now, I'm like, how y'all going to pay for equipment with a grant that they just put on the float that they said that they give for community awareness? Equipment is not in community awareness. I just want to bring that to you. Mr. McDowell, I think you need to take a look at that, because I asked for the application. I foyer back to the police station, asked for the application. The application say, when y'all put it in, y'all was for outreach program specified in areas of bullying, cyber crimes, and teen violence. How you buying equipment for a car? This money is supposed to be used to stop these crimes. I just want to say, I'm following the money, because I'm tired of people keep giving these grants up, and I don't know where this money going, and it don't look like y'all know where the money going. I just wanted to bring that to y'all attention. If you want to see me, I got all, you know I ain't going to come until I got all my foias. I got all the paperwork right here. My three minutes is up.
Thank you, Mr. Macklemore. Duane Steins.
Duane Steins from Zion. I just thought I'd comment on the fact that this new program, we're going to inspect all these apartments. I think you guys are getting way ahead of yourself. We already got plenty of inspectors. You don't have to hire more people to do somebody else's job. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I live here in Zion on Franklin Court. It actually intersects into Jordan Park. It's a, it's a little highway, because people travel on it, on the street, as if they're on the highway. And there's lots of children in that area, because it's a cul-de-sac that enters into the park. I'd just like to know if somebody could come down, maybe an engineer or somebody, to maybe consider putting in some speed bumps to slow down traffic. That's one of my items. And the other one is, we also have a covert that collects the water from our street that runs in front of my house that's eroding my property. And it's to the point where I have a tree that's about to, is about to impact the tree that's in front of my house. And it also is a little area for infestation of insects, such as mosquitoes. So I would like for somebody to at least come down and take a look at that, because it's on one side of my driveway and on the other. And it enters into the park area. But again, it is, when I go down and cut it, I'm chewed up by the mosquitoes. So maybe consider covering that area all the way down our street. There's another street, one street over, Lucky Street, theirs are covered. So I'd like for somebody to at least take a look at that and consider doing that. Thank you.
Have you talked to Director Colangelo about this?
No, I haven't. This is just my first.
He's the gentleman.
Yeah, I need an address.
Yeah, he's the gentleman in the yellow shirt.
4115 Franklin Court. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number seven is the consent agenda. Clerk please roll, read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on July 21st, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on July 21st, 2015 at 7:55 PM. The bills, vouchers 121444 through 121530 drawn on First Merit Bank, a total $995,783.60.
You've heard the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Shall move. A motion? In a second. Further discussion? Clerk please call and roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is consider passing resolutions as follows. 8A is temporary road closures for Jubilee Days. Is there a motion?
So moved.
The motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk please call and roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine is consider passing ordinances as follows. 9A is amending Chapter 56 of the Zion Municipal Code pertaining to the liquor control ordinance establishing a Class K license per Mayor Hill. This is an ordinance that we have talked, have been talking kind of around and about for the last four to six weeks. And this new Class K liquor license, the intention is to award five licenses. You have an ordinance in front of you, and I apologize for the fact that you just received the ordinance 20 minutes ago. But we had the liquor commission meeting on Thursday, and by the time the ordinance was written and distributed, today was the earliest you could get it. But you have had some time to look at it, and it's not terribly complicated, but there are some things that I would like to point out. This license is related to the ordinance that we passed last meeting regarding gaming in Zion, and the intention and the purpose of it is to increase revenue to the city because of our budgets. That's one of the reasons. Another reason is, I think that we have a lot of visitors to, in our community, we have a lot of empty storefronts in our community, and where there are places that we would like to fill, there is a different tax on a operating business than there is on a vacant business. And if we can fill some of these storefronts, it would not only increase the revenue from gaming and sales tax, but it would also increase property taxes. In order to have gaming, the, any facility that has the video gaming, they also have to have a liquor license. There was a request brought by Mr. Sean Davis for the council to consider adding a new classification of a liquor license for, we'll call it cafe gaming. And that's what you have before you tonight. The, I'll read, I'll read the memo that went to the liquor commission for you. I don't know if you have copies of that or not, but it's basically, it's pretty much the same as what you have in the ordinance. It says that this is necessary because a liquor license is required in order to get a video gaming license from the state of Illinois. It is being proposed that the new liquor license classification include all of the following. Maximum of five K licenses will be awarded. Each facility must include a minimum of 25 seats, excluding game machine seats. Now, that's different than the ordinance. Food must be prepared on premises. Food and beverage must be 25 percent of net revenue. What you will find in the ordinance is it's 15 percent of net revenue. And I'll define, net revenue is defined as net terminal income. Net terminal income is the amount of revenue that comes into each terminal minus the amount of money that's paid out. And I believe each machine is required to pay out 85 percent? 90? 94 percent gets paid back, so there's 6 percent left over. On that 6 percent, the federal government takes a share, the state of Illinois takes a share, the city of Zion will take a share, and then the remaining amount is split between the machine owner and the person who owns the facility where the machines are. So the food and beverage has to be 15 percent of what's left over after everybody else takes out their share. And the, just for information purposes, it's my understanding that the, after, after the payouts have been done, the money that's left over, the federal government gets 30 percent, the state of Illinois gets 25 percent, the city of Zion gets 5 percent, which leaves 40 percent, which is what the owner of the facility and the owner of the machine split. And that's determined between the owner of the machine and the owner of the facility. Only beer and wine may be sold on premises. All alcoholic beverages must be consumed on premises. A maximum of three alcoholic beverages may be served per person per day. People have asked me, "How are you going? How is that going to be enforced?" That is going to be up to the individual owners of the facility, but I, and that will be part of their application process to explain to us exactly how they're going to enforce that. And I don't think it's, would be that difficult at all. But there'll be only three drinks per day per person. And that means per day. They must have five operating gaming machines. Hours of operations will be limited from 7:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. The annual license fee will be $3,000, along with the initial application fee of $500, which is nonrefundable. Now, there have been a couple of questions that have been raised. The city of Zion is considering five locations for gaming, and there have been some questions that perhaps that's too many, because the surrounding community, surrounding communities generally don't have that many. It's Wadsworth has one cafe-type facility, Winthrop Harbor has one, Antioch has one, Waukegan has five, and Zion has five. And there's been a comparison between the number of cafe facilities with the populations. However, what I'm looking at is total number of machines. And I'll go through this list. Wadsworth has one machine for every 110 citizens in its community. Winthrop Harbor has one machine for one, every 168 people in the community. Beach Park has one machine for every 656 people in the community. Antioch has one machine for every 327 people in the community. Waukegan has one machine for every 437 people in the community. And based on what we anticipate, the amount of machines that will be in Zion, we will have one machine for every 486 people. So we're way on the high end of that. So I'm not worried about flooding the market. We're not being any different. We are being different in the, in the type of facilities where video gaming will take place, but we're not, the amount of machines per capita is, is, it's in line or even very conservative compared to the surrounding communities. There was also a question raised about the minimum seating in the ordinance that you The licensed premises must provide a minimum table seating capacity of 20 persons excluding game machines. So you can have, there'll be 25 seats in the facility, five of them will have to be with the games, but there need to be another, an additional 20 seats. That brought up the question of double versus single washrooms in these facilities, and we looked at our code, and what we're trying to do, one of the things that we're trying to accomplish here, as well as raise revenue, is to provide cafes where somebody might be able to go to lunch. And we don't think we can do that with, with just small seating. We do not just want gaming cafes. The object here on putting all this together is to provide a place where on Monday, somebody could say, "I'm going to go to that place for lunch. On Tuesday, I'm going to go to this place for lunch. I may go there on Wednesday for dinner." And we are expecting that with the 15 percent of revenue having to be food and beverage, we are hoping, and I fully expect, that there will be some competition between the gaming cafes. In order to draw people there, they're going to need to provide good food, good salads, good soups, whatever it might be, and then hopefully they will compete and offer something other than gaming. And that comes down to, that raises the question of how many toilets do you have to provide? Do you have to have men's and women's facilities? Or you can have, could you have unisex? The plumbing, state plumbing code says that when plumbing fixtures are required, separate facilities shall be provided for each sex, with the exception that separate facilities shall not be required in structures or tenant spaces with a total occupant load, including both employees and customers of 15 or less. So that means that if you've got five people playing games, you'd only have to provide nine seats, and that's not what we're looking for here. So we are going to, we're going to go with 20 regular seats plus five game seats for a total of 25. I think that's all I have as far as explanation goes, other than what's in the ordinance. Are there questions about what's in the ordinance from the commissioners?
What's the maximum we can charge as license fee for this liquor license?
We've had some discussions on this, and my original intent was I wanted to charge somewhere between 20 and $40,000 for the, for the license, and I was told that we would end up in court and lose. So this is the maximum fee that we think that we can charge and feel comfortable that we won't end up in court.
If we raise the fee for other liquor license, could we also raise this fee?
It's my understanding that...
Because this is equal to what we currently charge other establishments.
This is equal to what we're currently charging the grocery stores, Piggly, Wiggle, Jewel. This is slightly higher than what we are charging a couple of other establishments here. It's my understanding that a, correct me if I'm wrong, the only thing that keeps me from being a good attorney is I didn't go to law school. But I, it's my understanding that a license fee is to cover our expenses, and if we go too high, it's no longer a license fee and it's a tax. And as a home rule community, we don't have the authority to tax.
It could be perceived as that. That's correct. And it has to be reasonably related. And anything in the realm of 20 to 40,000 would not be so.
I was trying.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I appreciate the effort, because we're trying to get revenue into the city, and this is a way to do it. But I'm going to stay consistent with my vote on this, and vote no to it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion to approve?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
No.
Commissioner McDowell?
No.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9B is amending Article 3, parentheses, parking, stopping, and standing, parentheses, section 90-144, parking limits of the Zion Municipal Code per Chief Dumian.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Business owner in the 2700 block of Sheridan Road, West Side, has requested that parking just off the north end of the west alley be limited to 30-minute parking. Currently, the majority of the parking just off the west alley of Sheridan Road is limited to 30-minute parking. Staff is recommending 30-minute parking signs be posted at 2700 block of Sheridan Road, north end of the west alley. This is a reasonable request by the business owner, and it makes consistent with the majority of the parking off, just off of this alley. I did go by there today and noticed that there are six parking spaces there, one handicap, and five parking spaces that are not limited by any timeframe. Only one car was parked there. Since viewing that, that today and last week, I'm changing my recommendation that maybe we could just put two 30-minute parking stalls there, and I'll work with Public Works to get the right signage there. Rather than make all... get the right signage there, rather than make all five of them 30-minute parking.
So, do we want to do this today?
If the ordinance still fits, because it's not specific. It's just saying north end, we can specify which parking spaces in that north end.
So, there's five slots there right now and one handicap spot?
There's six total, one handicap, five regular. I think it would be more advantageous for the other businesses as well to just have two of them parked, mark this 30-minute parking.
I do agree with the chief's statement.
Did you say that? Did you say that?
Is there, is there a need for, for people to park there more than 30 minutes?
I think for some of the businesses there is. The specific business, no. It's requested. So, I think by eliminating two of the spaces would accommodate all the businesses that are on that corner right there.
And it's my understanding that the, the 30-minute request is because employees of some of the neighboring businesses are parking in those spaces all, for eight hours at a time?
That's correct.
And not allowing those spaces for parking.
Yes.
What did you say?
So, it's only going to be in two now?
It's only going to be in two, but how do we, how do we adapt this ordinance?
So, what has to actually change in this ordinance here?
The ordinance is very vague. It just says north end. So, I think we can specify which spaces in the north end.
Do you know what spaces those are right now, chief, or those are yet to be determined?
Yes, I do know which ones. It'll be the two farthest north parking spaces closest to the handicap parking.
Okay, and we can include that in there, and those will be delineated by the appropriate signage, right?
That's correct.
So, it could, it could remain what it has in here, but we could add in the two spaces that the chief is referring to, and I think it would be important to know as delineated by the signage, because those, those spots will be clearly marked, correct?
That's correct.
And as to two northernmost spaces?
Yes, sir.
Is it designated by the appropriate signage? Because they'll be marked.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, or amend this ordinance, parking ordinance, specifically section 1, letter 3, in the 2700 block of Sheridan Road, north end of the west alley, as delineated by signage. So, I'm adding that phrase, "as delineated by signage."
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10, discussion and authorization of approval. Ten A is request permission to fill two full-time inspector and one full-time administrative secretary positions in the building department per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioners, I request the city council's approval to fill the vacant positions of two full-time inspectors and one full-time administrative secretary. I would like to fill the full-time administrative secretary position immediately after required job posting. The decision is necessary to assist in implementing the rental certification program. The two full-time inspectors will not be required till October 1st, 2015. Attached is the revised cost reflecting the equipment assistance from the police department. The two-year average per inspection is $92. Staff is recommending inspection cost of $100.
So, if I read this correctly, we're anticipating that the certificates, the certificate, the inspection certificates are going to be $100?
That's correct.
And we're expecting to do 3,500 inspections and collecting $100 per inspection?
Well, the rental units, 3,500 is an approximate. Senior living is not considered in that. That'd be probably another 400. We don't have a real accurate count of single family right now. We're still working on that. So, I think a realistic number is closer to 4,500.
Oh, okay. So, more?
Yes.
With a first year expenditure of $187,604, a second year expenditure of 252, 252,000. I guess, why do we anticipate an increase in cost for the second year?
Because we're starting into the budget already. The inspectors won't be figured in until after October 1st.
Okay.
Administrative assistant is starting later after the fiscal year.
Okay.
And vehicles won't be included, you know, in the second year.
And why is it better that we hire, which we would have to pay insurance, IMRF, social security, as opposed to contracting these inspections?
Contracting's never been considered. I don't know what kind of costs is involved with that.
Well, we would, we could contract with someone qualified to do inspections and pay them a certain amount per inspection.
I, I'm, I can't answer this from a, I'm going to be lawyer. I think that many of these, we're anticipating that, I want to say this carefully, that we'll be in court or going through an adjudication process with a lot of the rental units. And there will be, once we tie this in with-
Nuisance abatement.
Nuisance abatement and crime-free housing, that there's going to be significant adjudication. And I think we are on much firmer ground if we have city employees responding and representing the city rather than contracted employees. And I think, I, I guess I, I believe it was Mr. Stein who spoke. He thought we're getting ahead of ourselves on the inspections, and I think that there are, there are two things that are going to have the biggest impact in our city in the future, and I think it's the police department and the building department. If we can, we can get our finances in, in place, it's going to require changes in, in housing and how landlords treat their tenants. And when I say treat their tenants, I mean by how they keep their property up. And, and I think it's, and it's crime, and we're going to have to put a great emphasis on those. And I, I think we want to be sure, at least from, from my perspective, and when I spent the two years in the building department, that the people that are representing the city are truly, truly representing the city, and they have the city's best interest at heart from an employee standpoint also. I, I don't think we even, even considered contracting because of those reasons.
All right. I appreciate getting these figures because it lets me know that the program will pay for itself with these inspectors and additional employees. And I think that's important, because I don't want to add to the tax burden and have to increase our property taxes to pay for this program. But it looks like the program will more than pay for itself. I can't think of any more questions right now.
Further discussion?
I would just like to ask one question. Rich, what is the base salary of that individual that would be? You have $82,000, $83,000, including the salary, insurance, IMRF is so scary. What would the base salary be?
They're right around 58,000 to 60,000, right in that area. 58,000 to 60,000. That's based on union wages agreements.
On union wages?
Yeah.
Correct. Do we have to pay them union wages?
I can't answer that one.
They would be part of the, the union contract, yes.
In the contract. Well, I support the program, but it seems like a lot of money for an individual just starting. But if that's what the union says, I guess that's what we'll have to do.
Well, not only that, just in the time that I've had a chance to work with the inspectors, not only are they inspecting the properties, but they're also getting a chance to, to know the people throughout the community and work with the police force if there are any issues or items that are under deep concern. And so, this is a, if you want to talk about another area of terms of outreach from, from the city and us working with the landlords, the absentee landlords that comprise a lot of the rental properties here, at some point, it's going to impact the quality of life here in terms of the, the property values. And for some of you that might not live on the side of town at which, which I live, there's a lot of activity over there in which this program will really help in terms of making sure that our citizens are safe, which is part of what the police force does, but also just ensuring the safety of our citizens with code enforcement. And they spend a lot of time, Bob Serrano, Baron Peterson, and Rich spend a lot of time in the community in trying to make sure that our citizens are safe in that, in that regard. I've had the opportunity since being here to go into some of these properties with them as inspection or as a potential buyer of property, and to see some of the conditions in which people are living. If you haven't been into some of these homes, would be absolutely appalling. And we all deserve to have decent housing, and we deserve to have the landlords that are coming in from other communities that are taking care of these properties to make sure that they respect our community the way we demand that it be respected. So, that, that's why it's a, it's a tough cost. And I, Commissioner McDowell, I understood that completely when you raised that issue last council meeting, and I respected that, but at, at some point, we've got to get this program off the ground. It, it's going to be great for our city.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think that the vast majority of our tenants will appreciate this program because it would, it will improve their living conditions.
And that's part of, just a small part of having, living and, and working in a, in a healthier community. So, I, of course, would move that we, that we pass this and support the hiring of, making the part-time person full-time and hire them to inspectors later in the year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye. Item 10B is consider request for waiver-permit fee for Zion Church of God per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Zion Church of God is in the process of replacing the roof with a project cost of $23,500. They are requesting from the city council to consider waiving the permit fee of $407,000.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please, is there further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that, I mean, it was raised with, yeah, comments about, should we waive permits for churches? And I, I think that churches contribute an awful lot to our community. Hours and hours, thousands of hours of volunteer service, and they add value to our community. So, waiving a fee like this, I think, is, is a good thing.
Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Mayor Hill?
No. Item 10C, request permission to advertise for bids for a new electrical contractor for streetlight maintenance and repair per Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. With the recent passing of the city's electrical contractor, the city currently has no one to service the various streetlights throughout the city that must be maintained. Staff is requesting to advertise for bids for a new electrical contractor for these services. Funding for these services is budgeted annually and is only used on an as-needed basis.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10D, request permission to advertise for bids for the Parkway Tree Removal Program per Director Colangelo.
Thank you again, Your Honor. In your packet are the addresses for this year's Parkway Tree Removal Program. There will be base bids and alternate bids for this project, and they will be awarded as funding permits. Funding is from line item 1001102162 trees, and staff is requesting to advertise for bids.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10E, request permission to advertise for bids for the 2015 Street Patching Program per Director Colangelo.
Thank you again. In your packet are project locations for the 2015 Street Patching Program. This year, we are concentrating on the Arbor Ridge subdivision in various locations. Staff is requesting to advertise for bids for this project. Funding is from the Motor Field Package Company.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10F, consider approval of economic incentive in TIF number one agreement between the city of Zion and NNT's Family Restaurant, Inc., per Director Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The agreement before you is the last piece of a economic incentive package that was recommended by TIF board wherein they would move to the old Brooks property, as it's known now, hopefully to be known as the NNT's property soon, where we acquired the property. There was a significant amount of repairs that needed to be done on the property, and then we would turn around and sell that, finance that to the NNT's. This agreement was the last contingency for the acquisition and the sale pieces, and this will provide the funds from TIF for the renovations that are needed in the property in the amount of $66,500. That will be structured similar to what we've done with some of our other TIF agreements where there would be a forgivable, a clawback, forgivable portion, but it would be spread over 15 years instead of 10, so as to line up with the financing agreement that they will be repaying the city for the purchase. Staff would, and the TIF board recommend approval of the agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 11 is departmental commentary. Hearing no departmental commentary. Item 12 is announcements. On Thursday through September 24th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the Zion Farmers Market at Sheridan Road and Shiloh Boulevard. August 8th, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Zion Fire Rescue Blood Drive, 1303 27th Street, Fire Station Number One. August 18th, 6:30 is Zion Township Meeting. August 18th at 7:00 PM is the Zion City Council meeting. We have need for a, on item number 13, we have need for closed session for purchases, sale of real estate, and pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.